Okay. Great. Can you guys see it? You can move your chairs over here if you want to see the slides.
It's the handout that you have.
Maybe even put it. Make it even bigger for the audience.
Yeah, they need a screen over here. Can I have a handout?
Yep.
Yes, they do have their handouts.
Thanks. And actually, so someone could have this handout too.
Yeah, that's the best we're gonna do. She's just got to flick it.
On the show, yeah. Okay, hold on, I'm gonna. So can you tell me again what it is?
And you know?
Our guest, B O U R G U E S T.
I didn't, I didn't write anything on this, so if we need it.
I think I'm still on that right.
Thank you.
Oh, there, okay. Did it work? So, it's singing anyway.
Hey stranger.
Signing momentarily, I'm feeling.
How you been? Signing in here. Oh, it says can't connect. Is it secure?
Can I connect to this one?
I just did the password and it.
It's B our guest, right? Is that what it is?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, try that.
It's just B our.
B our guest, yeah.
So, the letter B.
It's all lowercase, B E.
B E.
Yeah, B E.
O U R G U E S T. I don't seem to, I thought that's what I did, but.
Sorry folks.
There we go.
There we go.
But. There it is. Yep. Come on. There we go. See, might've. There we go. Very slow. There we go. Yes.
Okay, um, let's open the public hearing. Thank you all for coming. The town is considering implementing a new town program called Community Power. Or in other states called municipal aggregation. If adopted by a majority of town voters, the Community Power Plan would empower the town to enter into electric services agreements with competitive electric power suppliers to serve the electric supply needs of residents and small businesses in town. The intent is to pool our electricity demand and use the power of the competitive market for cost savings and more local renewable energy supply choices. We have with us tonight, I'm Rick LaBrack, the Chair of the Brentwood Energy and Efficiency Advisory Committee. Most, if not all, of the members of that committee are here around you tonight. And we're also pleased to have with us Emily Mance from Standard Power, who is the, our consultant, our, um, our program administrator. And, and she's gonna be giving us a short presentation. And then there'll be plenty of time for public comment. So, thank you very much.
All right. Is the recording on?
Uh, y- yep, it's recording, right, Hannah?
Sure.
And it's, look, it's live, it's streaming up here.
Okay.
So, I'm pretty sure we've got.
So, thank you, Rick. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight to the public hearing for Brentwood Community Power. Um, as Rick said, I'm Emily Mance, and I'm with a company called Standard Power. And, um, we are assisting the town and the commu- and the committee with developing a plan and hopefully bringing a program to Brentwood. So, the purpose of Community Power is right in the law. It's RSA 53E. It was passed four years ago in October of 2019. And essentially, the purpose is to provide, um, small electricity customers with the power of competitive markets. So, similar to larger commercial industrial customers, um, this brings the power of markets to smaller customers, residents and small businesses. And then it has some other elements of the, um, of the, um, law as well allows for, um, elements like, um, that, that can meet more local energy goals. So, although, we'll talk more about that as we go on. So, Community Power is where the municipality procures electricity for residents and small businesses. So, um, the town does not take possession of the power. Uh, this is a contractual arrangement, and it affects only the supply portion of your electric bill. The, uh, all delivery, um, delivery, emergency billing services stay with your distribution utility. So, I understand Brentwood has a couple different or three, three utilities here. Those services stay with your distribution utility. This only affects the supply portion of your bill. And I have an ever-source bill to show you what that looks like on that bill. And then the, um, so we just provide, um, stable rates, um, and at a competitive rate for customers. So, there are hundreds of programs around the country, and they're popular mostly because of cost savings. We can do better than the utility default rates because, um, when they go to procure power, they're on a fixed schedule and they, um, and they fit, they purchase for six months for a, a short contract length. We can time the market and we can go, use contract length as a way to get better prices. Uh, and then the program bundles customers together for buying power. Programs like this are also popular and brought to communities for their renewable energy benefits. Um, a program, um, that options include renewable energy markets can be used, markets have opportunities, they have, there's national, regional, local markets that we can use. Program can make choices, and we can also use a program to develop local resources. And then a program, so right now, customers have competitive supply options. I'm gonna talk a little more about that. But the, the program brings more benefits, including consumer protections. So, this is a municipal program, it's overseen by the town, um, and it doesn't have the, um, sort of pitfalls of competitive supply that, um, current residential customers, that they have choices, but they kind of have to manage those contracts, or they kind of have bad choices. Sometimes bad choices. So, some other benefits here are local control and energy planning. We can help with adding local programs, like, you know, solar array and municipal project, and then education and awareness. So, this is an ever-source utility bill. On the front side, um, I've highlighted the, that the program affects only the supply portion of your electricity bill. So, this, somebody pointed, this is an old bill, this is the sample bill on their website, but it supplies roughly half of your electricity bill now. And, um, so this program only affects that half of your bill. The other half stays with the utility. Caught the charges and the services will stay with the utility. And then, um, the lower highlighted part there says your electricity supplier is. This is where you can look at your current bill and see who your electricity supplier is. If it's your distribution utility, then you're eligible for automatic enrollment in the program. If this does not say your distribution utility, then you're not eligible for automatic enrollment, that, you know, you're, you stay with your competitive supplier unless you choose to opt in. Um, and this is the backside of the utility bill. Again, it's, it shows you the name of your supplier. For people who've joined the program or are in the program, it would be Brentwood Community Power. That's how you would know you're enrolled in the program. And then this just shows the calculation of how your, your power, just supply cost is calculated. It's a, it's the amount of kilowatt-hours you use times a rate, times a, you know, per kilowatt-hour rate. And, and it's that per kilowatt-hour rate that we are, um, striving to provide savings to customers, um, in Brentwood. So, currently, all utility customers fall into two buckets. One is they've made a choice for competitive supply, and generally, people know who they are, but not always. You've made a choice, or you're on utility default supply. Um, all meters are served by one or the other that are connected to the grid. So, um, and what the program does is it, um, makes eligible for automatic enrollment the utility default service customers. So, if you're currently on utility default service, then, um, you would be automatically enrolled in the program unless you take action to opt out. There's an opt-out period for 30 days, there's lots of information and outreach, program doesn't launch without savings, there's all kinds of reasons to join the program, and you don't lose these choices. But that's the, the, the key to the program working is that we're bundling customers together, and we move as a group, we go to pricing as a group, and we move as a group. But customers can come and go from the program. I just want to stress, before the program starts, after it starts, you can come and go as many times as you want, um, changes just make, are on your monthly meter read date. And there's no cost to join the program, there's no cost to leave the program, you can come and go. And then the program, um, also, um, can offer optional products. So, um, now we have, um, a few programs that are launched in the state of New Hampshire, and in the state, and there's, I think, we were talking about it, I think it's up for the 70 programs are starting to, you know, are in various stages of development. And four pro- four products are really shaking out as a normal in New Hampshire, but you don't have to, Brentwood can choose three products or, um, something else. Uh, but this includes a default, it includes the best prop, best price we can get for electricity in the, um, we always include the lowest cost we can get, and then some renewable energy products for people who want more renewable energy. So, the, so this is what, uh, this is a, a program in Massachusetts. We worked with Good Energy, a company in Massachusetts, to bring the first pro- programs to New Hampshire. So, the Key, Swansea, Marlboro, Wilton, they've just been operating since June, so we don't have operating experience, we, we have a few months, but it's not, it doesn't show a program like this. So, this is a Good Energy program in Massachusetts showing what the program, um, this program has done. So, this is in Somerville. The Bluetoothy line is the utility default rate, ever-source default rate changing every six months, going up and down. And the green dotted line is the program default rate. So, that program default, you can see, is consistently below the utility default rate. That's the way the program is designed to work, is to provide savings for customers. The, um, orange line is the, is the program basic. So, this, this program has a little bit of renewable energy in the default, but then the best price they could get was the orange de- was the orange line. This program had two renewals, so in the end of 2019 and the end of 2022 were, um, renewals for this program. And you'll notice at the end of 2019, you can't actually see the price change on the default because they, they, um, and if you look above at the, the legend now, the default went from, started with 5% renewable energy, and they doubled that to 10 in the end of 2019 without a price change. So, that's a program choice they made, but, um, so they doubled it in 2019, and then they doubled it again to 20% additional renewable energy in the end of 2022. So, um, so the price went up, the program price went up at the end of 2022, but as you can see, the, so did the utility rate. The utility in, in ever-source territory in Massachusetts was over 25 cents for supply only, um, and in that period, and now it's, um, closer to, it's just under 16 cents, um, currently. So, the program is still doing well. Savings in every period, except that the, um, and I always like to point this out, at the end of 2020, the, um, you can see that the utility default rate went below the program. So, can everyone see that? That's, so this is something people sort of can, are concerned about, like, what if the utility rate goes, so the default rate is just set and customers can forget it. That's the rate you can come and go if you want, it stays the same. The utility rate goes up and down. So, if it goes below, well, we don't worry about that. We are looking at, so customers can come and go, you can leave the program if you want to, and then jump back in when the rate changes. Or if you just stayed in the program through the history of the program, you can see the savings between the Bluetoothy line and the green dotted line are our goal. Savings over time, savings over the contract period, savings over the program, and we're looking at, you know, having both, having our bread, you know, our cake and eating it too, with stable rates and savings over time. So, this is just like a, a little checklist for the program goals. Rate relief for customers on program launch, we don't launch without savings, so that's, that's just a given. And, and we intend to have, well, and, well, I'll just go through it as it's written, stable rates, um, so level monthly costs, uh, allow for planning, budgeting, and evalu- and evaluating your investment, like, you know, am I gonna build a solar project, or do energy efficiency or something? Then you can, you have a little more window into what your costs are gonna be, and then plan expenses just out further than, than the utility's six-month rate change. Uh, and then the program goal is long-term savings, that's why they're endurable and popular across the country and why we're bringing them to New Hampshire. I've already said, no individual customer contracts, or, or, well, I didn't say this already, there are no individual customer contracts. So, you just call up the utility, you go online, you can change whether you're in the program or not, um, and then consumer protections by it being a municipal program. Oops, sorry, I missed. Got the wrong way here. So, um, the committee ran a survey, and, um, we've got a great response, the, um, so far, almost 100 respondents. So, if you haven't done a survey, then please, um, actually, if you, if you meet up with me afterward, I can give you the QR code if you, and do, uh, if you have a cellphone, or we can get a paper copy to you. Mostly residential customers, and, um, these are just some statistics here. High rate of adoption of energy efficiency measures like LED lights and, and insulation, and then, um, and the town website for communication. This is the, this is the, um, question that we asked to kind of determine what, um, the program options might be. So, um, the, if you add up all the green pie slices, uh, that's 50, so 64, 69. So, 74% of Brentwood respond, of respondents to Brentwood survey, um, have said that they would like more renewable energy in their, um, energy supply. So, with the largest portion, 54%, or, you know, like more than 75% of that saying, they'd like more renewable energy if they don't have to pay more with competitive prices. So, um, so that's a good, um, that's really what we look at for, um, suggesting that you could support a green, um, default, and we can talk more about, about the products in a, in a couple of slides. And then you had a good solid quarter, 26% that said they don't want more renewable energy, um, and we always see some portion of the community that says that they want the best price we can get, and, um, and so we always offer that, that, um, product too. So, in the plan, in the draft plan, as we, you know, put it into template and, um, and have had a few discussions with the committee, uh, the, the default would be, you know, competitive rate with a slight amount of renewable energy. The idea is that if you put in just a, you know, a small amount, it doesn't cost much more than the, than the basic rate, but it preserves the opportunity to increase renewable energy if, if that became a town goal in the future. Um, and then there's a choice for, the Brentwood basic is the lowest rate we can get, and, and then a couple of, you know, one or two, you know, more renewable energy products, again, that's kind of shaking out in ta- in the state to be 50% and 100% renewable. And I can talk about the costs that those add, um, here as well. So, I just have a couple more slides. We're in the process of, um, reviewing, of creating a draft plan with public input, so this is the, I think this is, this is your first hearing for, um, yeah, I think this is your first hearing, right? So, public, so there'll be another public hearing, um, the survey is out, um, we're taking public comment on the plan and, um, and, um, so I'll answer your questions tonight. And then the plan goes through a public utility commission process, it goes to town voters, or it goes to the select board, um, for approval, it would go to town voters before a program was implemented. And then we go through the, you know, we procure supply, and, um, and the public outreach is detailed in the plan, um, there's extensive public outreach once a program is being launched. Every, every household in the community gets, um, at least one, and, um, I think eligible customers get two mailings to say that this program is starting, um, pay attention to your mail, you've got 30 days to take action, here are your options, and here's how you get help. We have help telephone numbers, we have a, you know, you can do it on, on, on the website. There's options for getting customer service. So, actually, so I guess this is my last, or my, basically, it's about, um, so Standard Power is a full-service energy broker. We started, we, um, partnered with a company called Good Energy to provide community power services for a first launch group in New Hampshire. Community Power's gone crazy all over the country because of the high electric rates over the last couple of years and, you know, months and years, and so, um, we're taking the lead in New Hampshire now. But we have 27 communities we're working with on Community Power, and, um, you would be in, in, in good company to, um, you know, there's, we have about 14 communities that would be coming up in this, uh, launch as soon as the spring of next year, or within the next, um, you know, year, so. Um, we, well, we're the largest group net meeting program in New Hampshire. That just is, we, um, we have, uh, we offer municipalities benefits, um, based on, uh, we have a series of hyd- small hydro facilities that generate, um, group net meeting benefits and that, and that's just one of the ways that, as a company, we are creative about adding renewable energy to our customers. It's a, renewable energy is a goal of ours, and, um, and, you know, I, I have to really sort of admit and say that I hope that, um, Brentwood takes up the, um, renewable energy mantle as well as a cost saver. Yes, this is my last slide, which is our team.
Excellent. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, yes.
All set? All right, um, yeah, then we're here to, to interact and, and take your, your feedback, your comments, your questions. So, who's got a question or comment?
Emily?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you very much. My first question has to do with the Institute for Energy Research of 2019. 2019, the Institute for Energy Research declared the United States of America was energy independent. And on January 21 of 2021, the new President of the United States made sure that that would not happen. And now, here we are today, coming up with what I would appear to be a number of Band-Aid solutions for a problem that had already been taken care of. So, why are we doing this? I mean, that's my general, why are we doing this?
So, we're doing it for, uh, rate relief for our customers in Brentwood. Uh, we're, we're just getting better rates than the utility default. Most customers don't know who the ER is, and they don't know where their supply comes from, they just know that they, um, pay electric rates, and, and that they go up and down, and they were as high as 22 cents a kilowatt hour, um, and 20. And so, um, both to have some stable rate relief without going into the competitive market, that's why we're doing it.
Great. Come on ahead.
So, what's the difference with this, uh, that you're offering versus, uh, what I do now, which is just call one of them, you know, online and check, you know, who has the competitive rate and call up, you know, uh, that, that company, you know, for example, direct energy. What's the difference?
So, uh, first, our rates are better if you look on, if you look at competitive rates on the state website, our rates are there, and they're, they're better than competitive supply. The second is the consumer protections, you manage your contracts, so, but if you didn't renew on time, those contracts typically go through the roof. Um, the highest rate I saw was 29.99 cents a kilowatt hour for supply only. So, that person was paying over 40 cents a kilowatt hour, and they didn't know, they hadn't, you know, they brought their bill to the hearing and had me look at it, and they were paying. So, that's a, so the competitive market, some people do well, and maybe you're doing very well. Sometimes the short contracts, February to September is a great rate, but over time, you have to manage that. And this is just a way for, this is just a friendlier option for people who don't want to manage, want better rates, need better rates, and, um, can't or don't want to manage the competitive market.
And it's friendlier how?
Well, it's friendlier because it's, so we do, well, so Direct Energy now would offer like two years or multiple months, so it's, so it's the same, and they don't have exit fees. But I would say they don't have exit fees partly because Community Powers come to New Hampshire. I mean, I think they probably dropped that because they can't compete that way anymore. So, then we compete straight on rates. And the other thing is that our renewable energy is local renewable energy, so additional renewable energy in this program would be Class 1 renewable energy, New Hampshire Class 1, which would be like new solar, um, I mean, you could, the, the committee can make that choice, but that's what's in your draft, and that's what we are saying is impactful to, so it's, it's renewable energy that's attached to the New England grid.
And I know, like, when you go into the competitive market, they also like, they have three or four different, you know, standard, and then they also have renewables, so you can choose all that.
So, the renewable energy are class, are, um, I don't know what they're called, EX, they're, they're federal wind wrecks, those are wrecks that, from wind projects in, you know, the Midwest.
Renewable energy credits, wrecks, right?
I'm sorry. Renewable energy, yes, the, the renewable energy in those programs is, is, um, purchased from, like, the Midwest. They're, they're inexpensive wrecks that aren't connected to the electric grid. Those electrons, electrons can't be gray or brown, they're just electrons, but those electrons are not connected to the electricity grid. You are not, like, ever served by, by the renewable energy that's represented in those programs. Where the program in the, um, Class 1 renewable energy certificates, which, I mean, I can explain more about that, that, that's the renewable energy attribute, that's how you know that you're, that you have real renewable energy in your program, it's a.
I think the easiest, I, if, if I could, Emily, probably the easiest way to explain it is, before, we had, it, here in New England, there weren't the same level of, you know, green energy projects as there are in other parts of the country. So, like California, West Coast, Arizona, so this whole renewable energy credit program got started, so in order, so if you were in New England and you wanted to buy green power, you could actually buy that green power, but you really were buying a credit that then was actually created from a project far, far away. So, what Emily's saying with, with a Class 1, those projects have to be local in New Hampshire. Is that, is that, I, actually, let, I'm gonna explain it.
I think we've, I think we've answered the question, I think I want to get everyone else who has another question a chance, we can go back to this, I just want to make sure, in the limited time we have, everyone gets a chance to talk. Go ahead. Yeah, that was.
I see eight smiling faces in that, uh, slide. How'd those eight smiling faces get paid?
Great question. We get a mil per kilowatt, or so a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour on your program. So, once your program launches, uh, we don't, we don't take any fees for consulting upfront, but once your program launches, we get a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. That's it. That's what we get.
Um, how is it that you came up with the, you are automatically enrolled unless you get this mysterious thing in the mail?
That's a great question. You have, we have opt-in now, um, as this gentleman was talking about, you can go out and get competitive supply, you can go and do your own thing and get competitive supply. By bundling customers together, we get better rates and customer protection. So, um, you know, when the, when your, um, program is renewing, it doesn't renew, it, it doesn't start out at an introductory rate and then renew at a terrible rate.
But you're starting off by, by lassoing me into this.
Um, you're lassoed already into your default service. Well, if you are, are you on competitive supply, or are you on default service?
I, I generally shop and shop and shop. And, um.
So, you're not automatically enrolled then?
So, I don't see a problem, um, with my rates, welcome to 2021, if something happened.
If you're on competitive supply, you're not automatically enrolled. You can choose to opt in if you like the rate, if you shop the rates and ours are
You just said that we are automatically enrolled.
assessed. Only default service customers are automatically enrolled, only people who haven't made a choice. People who've made a choice don't, aren't automatically enrolled.
Um, I have the electric go up in my.
Um, I have New Hampshire Electric Co-op and my rate is eleven point one cent. So would you be less than that?
So our current, the, our rate, our programs that launched in June are eleven point one cents. The basic rate is eleven point one cents. Um, our, we have new programs that we have contracted for. We're gonna make an announcement in early December and they are less than that. We intend to, we have lots of towns that have co-op customers that, and they want to serve Eversource and co-op and Unitil. Um, so we intend to beat the rate at, you know, on launch for sure and hopefully over time. That's it.
So, but, but I'll be automatically enrolled unless I say no, I want to stay with New Hampshire Electric Co-op right now?
That's, that's correct. And you'd have thirty days, you'd get a letter in the mail that gives you instructions. You'd have thirty days to, um, to opt-out before the program starts or any time.
Does your point one or whatever your kilowatt thing, is that on top of my eleven point one cent?
No, no, that's all, that's a great question. That's, that's all in.
And if you have a whole bunch of people, granted, we have to pass it at town meeting, right?
Correct.
But then if you have a whole lot of people saying, no, this isn't working for me, and then you know, costs that come in and costs that go out, how many people, like what percentage of the town do you have to have to keep on being here?
So again, it's a great question. We contracted a supplier who takes all of the migration risk. That's called migration risk. People could, you know, join en masse or leave en masse and the people in the program get the same rate for the program period. There's no minimum percentage. They, they just take the risk for the, um, for the hour.
And save that the town passes it, but then only twenty-five percent stay in it. That rate's not gonna stay low, right?
Um, it is, it's...
The next contract is up?
No, it's a, it's really a great question. It's a really important point. The, the, the town passes it at town meeting, hopefully. Then you, um, then we go up a bit, we get a price, we launch the program. It doesn't matter how many people stay in the program. That rate is good for the pro, for the contract period. And the contract period is chosen by the, the town. So it could be, you know, typically it's twenty-four months, but it could be seventeen months or thirty months. And then, yeah.
Go ahead.
Emily? Yes. I'd like to draw, draw your attention to the Community Power Plan Exhibit Four.
Oh, okay.
And the, the survey that was taken by the residents of the community. Um, I think it, when I read this, I think it was something like eighty-six participants. That has increased to perhaps mid-nineties, something like that. That's about two point seven percent of the total voting population of this town. And this is the way the wording is constructed. It says, are you interested in adding additional renewables? And peppered throughout the entire survey is would, like, would, like, would, like, or would not like. But then below that, and this is on page four of seven, in the summary of the survey results, it says seventy-six percent of respondents want more renewable energy. That's not correct. You, it said, you've got the incentive here. I, okay, I would take it if, if this, if X then Y. But this summary says seventy-six percent of the respondents want more renewable energy. No, that, that is not true.
I agree, that's, sure.
So I'm hoping, and I don't know if this is a boilerplateed, uh, product or not, which maybe is given out to a number of towns and they change a few words from here to there, but that particular word, want, needs to be corrected.
I can hear your point. We, we can do that.
Next question, anyone? Sarah in the back?
What are the cons of joining the program?
Um, well, people dislike the automatic enrollment. Um, but otherwise, there's no con. Uh, peo-, you can get better rates, you can, you can get the lowest rate we can get, you can get more renewable energy, and you have a whole committee of people who are interested in, um, taking care of the details for renewable energy and low costs.
The, the opt-out is set by an RSA, isn't that correct? That's how you started your presentation?
So the RSA enables the opt-out. We've had opt-in for twenty years and the RSA enabled this period where we can bring these programs that actually work and bring savings. Yeah.
Can I ask one more? Um, when I look at the Brentwood Community Power Program options, does the town, and I'm sorry, I wasn't, I guess maybe not paying attention, does the town choose the basic, the plus, the fifty or the one hundred, or do you choose that on your own with your own bill?
So the plan, the draft plan has, um, some guidelines for taking public input on what the default might look like, for instance, what those products might look like. Um, the plan does have some language about some flexibility because if prices were really high and not competitive, we might change the, the, um, the default to be competitive with the utility default. I mean, there's some flexibility written into the plan, but that's more for, um, just pricing so that we get a great program for, for Brentwood. Um, but, so it's all processed, isn't, does that answer your question?
There, there was an organization called Arcadia, so when I paid my regular bill, I also paid a stipend to Arcadia so that I could get more renewable energy, just to be a conscientious person. However, at that, this point, we won't need that then with this, so.
That's right. Now, they might have been local, they might have been New England-based renewable energy. Arcadia might have been national.
I know, right? Now, now they're gone. It's a...
They're gone, okay.
Yeah, too bad.
Well, this will be high-quality renewable energy in the region.
How long has Standard Power been a business?
Since two thousand and ten.
And, um, why, why is Eversource for the default locked into short-term purchasing?
Um, it's just the law and they don't, so we just, they do their best with the short-term turnover, but all the utilities actually have a six-month turnover.
Why?
Um, I can't answer that. I'm not sure.
That's a way of regulations for the...
Just regulations.
They do that for the, the, the Eversource. It doesn't apply to co-op, co-op checks its own rates.
But they do change every six months.
They do change.
Yeah.
So it's a regulation, but, um, somebody thought there was an advantage to that when it was made a regulation. I'm, I'm just curious what...
Yeah, that, that, different states do it differently and even in New Hampshire, it's evolved and it's changed, right? In Massachusetts, they have a six-month as well, but because of what happened, you saw the up and down, they now have an open proceeding to ask those same questions, why, you know? So, in times of volatility, those questions come up. And, and, and when volatility goes away, those, those questions kind of fizzle down. And, and I can't really recite the whole history of the docket in New Hampshire that ended up concluding that the six-month, uh, solicitation was proper. But I know one thing it did is it, it split the two winter months in half, right? That was one bit of wisdom that came out of that. Because January and February in New England are the priciest, so I believe the way it's done, at least in Eversource, is to include Janu-, like July through January or whatever it is, and then February through August to kind of split up the, the, the most volatile months of the year. But it still results in an up and down effect.
I think the origin was a winter rate and a summer rate. So initially, we, you know, that was the, but then they were like, well, we don't actually like to go up and down. So then they moved the, the six-month increment so that it tries to level it, but it levels it poorly. Like, they go up and down.
Okay, a different question. Um, uh, I'm not sure if it's, the ans-, the answer is the same as to the con question, but what would be a reason not to get involved in the, in this program?
I don't have a reason for that. I, I don't have a...
Do you mean that from an individual resident's perspective or from a, from a town's?
From a town's perspective.
For a town's perspective.
I mean, what, what we say, I'll give these guys a minute to think if you can think of a reason. What we say is that the town is, you know, brings the program to individuals and then individuals have more choices and can, you know, sort themselves out of where they want to be. So even if you're on competitive supply already and you, you may not want to be part of the program, it's still nice to bring those options to people who want and need cost savings and, and more choices.
I think it's, I think it's important to remember too that you don't have to do this. If, if the community goes with it and you decide not to do it, you're not obligated. You can opt-out. You there's, you're not forced to do anything. It's kind of like just another option available for you. So if you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it. Nobody's obligated. Period. No obligations.
And the, the, uh, service, uh, support, um, I don't know, I lose power a couple of times here and maybe more often. Uh, who, who do I call?
So, emergency services, the same crews will arrive on your street or not as a work, but, no, the same crews will arrive and, and fix your power. That's it. Emergency services, delivery, poles and wires, that's all stays with your distribution utility.
Okay, last, last question. Uh, about renewables, um, does the town decide as a whole whether it's gonna be ten percent renewables or whatever, or does each individual house sort of have a choice?
You'll have a choice. You'll have, um, I'm, we're looking at four, uh, four choices plus the current choices. So you could choose.
So each individual house can choose ten percent renewable or fifty percent renewable?
Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, but during, on, on the day, right, the day when the prices come in, okay, um, Standard Power is in communication with a representative of the, the Select Board, right, on choosing, we, we will have, make a decision that day what the Brentwood default product will be. And it might be the basic, which has no additional renewable energy over state law. It might be the basic plus the ten percent. I would assume it's not gonna be the basic plus the fifty or the hundred. And, but perhaps it could be, right? But then, then that will be the default so that eligible customers that do nothing, so they get the letter in the mail, they, they don't read it, they throw it away, they ignore it, whatever, um, they'll be put on that default, whether it's the zero, the ten, the fifty or the one hundred. But you can also, I don't know why I keep doing this, but you can, you can also call up when you get that letter. You can opt-up, correct? If, if Brentwood as a whole decides we're gonna go with the basic, which is zero incremental renewables, each individual customer can call up and ask to be put in the next tier or the next tier. Similarly, if Brentwood decides to go with the plus fifty percent as the default, Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, can you call up and bump down as well? Say, I want to go down to ten or zero?
Right. And to be clear, we're not recommending you go to plus fifty for the default. The, the default is one to ten percent is what, is what we're aiming for. We want a successful program launch. We want great savings. We want people to pay attention to the program and get your questions answered, but then be really super happy with the, with the program. So that's, yeah.
Anyone else in the back?
Yeah, just asking for, I mean, one of, probably a larger majority of uninformed, you know, voters or residents at the town. And I gotta say, I applaud, I read a little bit of Brentwood Newsletter, Fletcher Group has done, I think it's a great thing. It just seems like a no-brainer here really to opt into the program. And in answer to, you know, like, I think you spoke about in relation to, was this question, if you start out and you, this program starts in July next year, and by September first, this decides it's not a good program for her, how long does it take for her to opt-out, for that opt-out period to go back to her default system?
So, um, this is, it's defined by the utility and they say it's the next available, um, meter read date for your household. So you would all have different meter read dates and it could be one or two cycles depending on, um, but, you know, it's, it's not immediate, but it's, it is right away, it's prompt.
How could the town go wrong? I think, that was danger.
You're chugging the waters, right? How could the town go wrong with the selectmen in charge of our electricity? How did you, how did you get involved in the town of Brentwood? You have no history in the state of Massachusetts, you just said, October including June. Um, how did you get these other towns and who specifically in Brentwood did you entice to get this commission going so that you guys could get us back?
Over to you, right.
So they could lasso us into your profit?
No, it didn't work that way.
And, and, yeah, no, first of all, I think you may misunderstood what she said. Standard Power's been in Nashville, they've been in New Hampshire doing, uh, electricity, uh, brokerage for industrial customers for, for, you know, twelve, thirteen years. So they, so, um, what, the, there's one other thing you said. Say it again, I, I missed.
Towns, the history you have with towns. You have no data.
How did Standard come to us? It's really the other way around.
The Select, the Select Board, I think last October or something, created this, the Brentwood Energy Committee. And one of the things they asked was that committee would do some research on the concept of community power, which was just gaining some traction at that time. So we, we heard, um, and we researched three different options. One of them was Standard Power. We brought our recommendation to the Select Board a month or two ago and, and recommended that we move forward investigating, creating a community power program for Brentwood using Standard Power as our consultant. And that's why, that's why we're here today.
And, and if I could just say too, so there was, uh, one of the other ones which there's, cause I was a little confused, there's something called Community Power Coalition, right? And so that's what Exeter ended up going with. And so what I like better about, we have our own broker and our broker is representing us as opposed to us being part of many different communities, you know? So if we were part of the coalition, right, I don't know how many towns are in that, but...
Forty-seven.
Like forty-seven. But if we don't have a, a seat at the table, we don't really, we would have to go with what the other forty-six towns wanted to do. So this way we have our own broker, you know, who basically is gonna listen to what they want to do.
And so when does relying on government to do anything really benefit us more? Let me ask.
Is there anyone here who's an expert who can answer that question? I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say probably not. So does anyone have any other questions or questions?
Can I ask, just to give you one more piece of information, which is that as a broker, we have, um, I think it's seventy municipal customers now that we're saving money for. Um, so we have a track record of working with, you know, positively on behalf of taxpayers, but with municipals, municipalities to save money on electricity costs. So, so we see that our, our mission is very narrowly focused on, and so I hope that we are, you know, doing our job well.
I think it's also important to note that you are not required to join this. If you don't want to join, don't. You're not forced to do anything.
Theoretically, theoretically, if the average person is lassoed in...
If you don't want to join it, if you don't want to save money, then don't do it.
Then don't do it.
Spend your money. Do it.
Yeah. Theoretically though, they're lassoed in, the average person is lassoed in without really knowing it.
They'll be given, they'll be sent a letter.
Until they opt-out with a piece of snail mail, hopefully that day.
They're required to receive that letter.
Correct. And know what it is.
Yeah. But like legally, we're required to send that letter. Everyone in the town's gonna get that letter.
And I'm sure the Brentwood Newsletter will publicize it, so give us a newsletter there.
In the back, uh, Kristen and then the gentleman to your left.
I was just gonna say, the, the flip side of that is if we made people opt-in, people are gonna be mad because they're not saving money. They're gonna hear, oh, six months later, oh, this program's gonna save people money, no one told me. So I think the opt-in, the option to opt-out, and, you know, we're all trying to do a good job of communicating that is, um, I think there's benefit.
But also the rates wouldn't be, we, we need to bundle the program to get better rates. I mean, yes, we could have poorer rates and do opt-in and then it would, it'd basically fail, so.
Um, one, one clarification, is an eligible customer also businesses or is this just residential?
It's all customers on default, on utility default supply.
Which could include businesses.
Yes, it can, it include, um, larger customers can join the program, but the, the largest customers would be at a market rate. So we do encourage customer, you know, customers to come to us, see if we can do better as a broker and include you in the program, but they don't harm, we protect the revenue per customer rates from the, you know, some of the customers have.
The gentleman had a bag of questions then. Do you there?
Yeah, I have two questions, one from Emily, one from the board. The one for Emily is what renewable products are you offering that one to ten? Are we doing solar? Are we doing wind, hydro, combination? And where are the locations of these renewable energies?
So we use Class One Renewable Energy Certificates, so, um, and that is a defined, um, in the New Hampshire statute. I think, I think it's defined in the plan, I think we've got a. Um, and they are principally new solar resources and, um, we're... new solar resources, and, um, we're seeing like tons of solar development in New Hampshire at the moment, so we've anticipated lots of it.
Like solar farms, you mean, something like that?
Actually, so, um, it's all renewable energy producers, whether it's on rooftop solar or municipal programs or large, large production. And we, um, we can define it, we, we define as closest to Brentwood as we can, but as a practical matter, it is more regional, it's connected to the New England grid, so.
And for the board, I'm just curious, on the Brentwood survey, community survey, it's a town website, Facebook, what Facebook group or page are you posting, or is it the town on the website, Facebook page?
It's the town Facebook.
It's the town Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I have been resident of Massachusetts, I've lived here for five years, and while I was in Massachusetts, I was, um, part of a community, um, PB, municipal power, it was the only option we had, and it was wonderful, but they also taught us a rebate or a discount if we paid our bill by a certain date. It was approximately maybe ten dollars a month difference. The same thing goes for Redding. Uh, they buy their power from Redding, and my sister tells me, I've been in communication with her, that you get a discount on top of the discount that you get by participating with those. They have no option, they have to use those particular, um, power options. Um, I myself, up here, I, um, well, when I was in Saugus, when I lived in Saugus, um, they had, I lived in a condominium, and they had a different power company come and, we opt, all said you could option out, they'd give us a fifty-dollar gift card to Market Basket or whoever it was, and, well, that was fine, but we were locked in for two years, so the rate went up, we were stuck, you couldn't swap out. So, um, up here, I've been going cuckoo, trying to find a, a place that I can get the rate, I mean, I'm changing like every six months, and then you can't get the rate until the bill is paid, the neck, or red, the meter is red for the next months before you can switch over. So it's a lot of work to do that.
Can I respond to that?
Yep.
So, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I just Googled this, and PBody, Massachusetts has the PBody Municipal Light Plant?
Yeah.
So that is a town-owned municipal light service? That's separate from community power?
I asked you that.
Okay, just, so you could opt out.
I'm just giving this an example of what it could be like.
Yes, but so with that, you were stuck in a not rate?
No.
You could only, for, you could change only every six months or so, you said?
No, not in that.
Okay, sorry.
When I was in Saugus.
And Saugus, okay, sorry for the confusion there.
I lived in Linfield, and Lincoln, half of Linfield was, um, provided by PBody Life, and I helped us by Redding, so.
Oh, okay.
And we never had any problem with it, it was wonderful. But, again, up here, I'm always looking for the best rate possible, and you're always almost two months late to get into it, and by the time you get into it, they're changing the rates again.
Yeah, it's not like stocks where you can just trade every day.
Right.
It's, it's a long-term thing.
Commitment.
There's, there's could be a two-month lag.
Right.
So if you see that Eversource, um, you see that that was a direct energy or whatever one is, is three cents lower.
Right.
Unless they give you a contract that day and they wait for you for two months, you're going to end up probably getting what they, when you start, what they get. But I don't know who rules, it just, it sounds like a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
And some people want to do the work, and some people don't. It's really up to, up to the homeowner.
I don't, I don't think in Brentwood, I, because if Eversource is still responsible for the billing and all of that, I don't, I don't think we're ever going to be able to get like a ten-dollar prepay or, or a discount thing, because that's a, Eversource is still doing the billing.
That's, that's going to disappoint you as well, then, you don't get a judicial discount.
But me, me. I will say, well, so on launch, we are not planning on launching anything fancy. Um, I think that's a great idea, though, we have that with, you know, Eversource at the moment, we pay on time, and, and I think that's a nice benefit for, um, for customers, and, but we would have imagined that in the future. The law would allow something like that.
Really?
Yep.
Nice.
Yep, um, but not, we're not doing that on launch, that would be something.
That's actually the first time I've been along public hearings and haven't heard that suggestion, of course. Especially the seniors. Oh, every didn't help, too, sure.
Page one of nineteen speaks to environmental benefits apropos renewable energy, environmental benefits, environmental benefits, et cetera, et cetera. Have you discovered, or has anyone discovered anywhere in the United States of America a recycling plant for solar panels? Because I just recently read an article in Harvard Business Review that this is becoming a nightmare as solar panels, as the years tick by, and they lose their usefulness gradually, you have to get rid of them and replace them. Well, where do they go? They should go, in theory, to some kind of a recycling plant, but then they have to separate all the alloys from the glass and the this and the that, and the bottom line is, it looks as if the majority of these things are going to wind up in a landfill somewhere.
Yeah.
So is everybody prepared for that? And I might also add, and it's very difficult to separate politics from any of this, but there's this governor out in California who insists that by the year 2035, they're going to, everybody in that state has to purchase an electric vehicle. That same governor is attempting to become president right now as we speak. If he becomes president and demands that every single person in America has to drive a battery to and from Market Basket. When that happens, are we going to have enough electricity from all these renewables to be able to charge all the electric vehicles that are needed?
So these, see, these are complex issues.
This is, this is.
We're just talking about renewable renewables.
No, these are complex issues.
Don't pick a renewable, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the cost to the entire United States of America. This isn't something that just costs.
Can someone talk about that for a second?
This, this, this costs all of us.
So I, I like to answer your question this way. Actually, if you don't mind, I like to answer your question this way, which is that there are trade-offs, but we have, um, and now I'm just beyond myself, talks about carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. It's an imperfect solution, they all are, like, so we're just doing something about, um, climate change, and that's the way it is. This program is a, is a little thing. I mean, it's, it, it'll be a big thing to some people on their electric bills that don't, they used to pay twenty-two cents, but, but it's a, you're talking about, you know, the scope is much broader than this program, um, but we need to do something about carbon emissions and about the, about climate change and species, you know?
Okay, okay, but I did, but I did bring it up, I did bring it up, because you mentioned the environmental benefits.
Yes, and I, I do agree with your point, I do understand.
All right, it's seven o'clock.
Exactly, and all of us.
Excuse me.
It's up in the apartment.
Yeah, it's seven o'clock, it's seven o'clock, all right? If anyone has any, you know, directed feedback on the plan, on the program, any questions on how it works, we'll stick around and answer those questions, but we're not going to stick around much longer and debate global energy economics and things that are well, well beyond the scope of this hearing. All right, so does anyone have any directed questions about the program?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
Okay, once again, peppered, this has to do with language that's peppered in the plan, and the difference between equality and equity. This, these are not my words, these are the words that are in the plan, and you do make a distinction between equality and equity. Individuals who are not political look at the word equality and they say, okay, that applies equally to every single person across the board. What does the word equity mean when it comes to this plan? Because for a political party, it means that it's confined to specific groups. Typically, that's based on ethnicity or skin color. So what does the word equity mean?
No, no, Emily, please.
It's in the RSA, that's the answer.
Okay, it's in, it's, it's, it's in the RSA, okay? I, we, we don't have a definition in the plan, it does not make a difference to how this plan is going to operate. If you'd like to submit to the Brentwood Energy Committee some red-line comments on that plan that specifically address your concern with the use of the word equity in that plan, we will consider your feedback, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else?
Thanks for the presentation and to the committee, thank you, many, many hours, a lot of brain power, this committee is fantastic, I appreciate all that work you've done.
Thank you. Definitely, thanks everyone for being here, especially you and Emily, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I understand. I have to be with you for a long time. I cover every type of generation that there is, so it's much broader, but I just didn't want to be too important.
Yeah. No, thank you.